Good afternoon and welcome to the regular meeting of the Forsyth County Board of Commissioners this 29th day of June. Chairman Martin and Commissioner McDaniel are participating remotely for today's meeting. We will begin our meeting with a moment of silence, followed by the Pledge of Allegiance led today by Commissioner Plaller. Let's all stand, please, and have a moment of silence. Amen.
(inaudible) citizens who are interested in participating in the public session portion of the meeting today, please call 336-422-1200. You will be placed on hold until the public session begins. Members of the audience who are interested in participating in the public session today, please fill out a speaker card and return it to our clerk. And I will repeat the number one more time in case you wanted to call in, 336-422-1200. Commissioners, the first item on the agenda today is a resolution approving the jail health medical plan at the Forsyth County Law Enforcement Detention Center. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Have a motion by Commissioner Plaller?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Bessie. Is there discussion? If not, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
You're muted, Dr. Martin. You're still muted.
Could that be on our side?
I think I heard something.
Madam Vice Chair, if the chairman can't, or we, or whoever it is, can't fix the audio, he could certainly just raise his hand.
Okay, could you raise your hand, Dr. Martin, if you're in favor? Yes. Commissioner McDaniel? Madam Clerk, is she on?
Vice Chair, she is on. She is muted.
Okay. Okay, okay. That's a unanimous vote. Thank you so much. The next item on the agenda is a resolution adopting an amended policy regarding settlement of certain negligent and tort claims against Forsyth County in limited circumstances. Do I have a motion?
Move approval.
Approved by Commissioner Plaller?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Linville. Is there any discussion? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Okay, that is a unanimous vote. Thank you very much. Commissioner McDaniel, and you saw that, okay, they both said aye. Madam Clerk, do we have cards or a call for the public session? Oh, did I miss one? Yeah, oh, I'm sorry, group. The next agenda item is approval of minutes for the meeting of June 5th, June 8th, and June 15th.
Move approval.
Have approval by Commissioner Plaller and a second by Commissioner Bessie. Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
That's unanimous. Now, Madam Clerk, do we have cards or a call?
No, ma'am, we do not.
Okay, that's great. Mr. Manager, I'm going to turn the meeting over to you now.
Thank you, Madam Chair, and good afternoon, board members and staff and guests. We do have some business items for consideration this afternoon. We have reviewed these in briefing sessions and hopefully have answered all your questions as we dive into it. So I will jump into it. We have three budget and finance items. Item five is an amendment to the fiscal year 2022/2023 Fire Tax District Special Revenue Fund and Budget Ordinance that appropriates additional sales tax proceeds. And so what this is, is this recognizes additional revenue that we have received or expect to receive as we close out year end. It increases the entire fund by $163,000, and it affects the 25 fire tax service districts and the overlay district.
Move approval.
Approval by Commissioner Plaller. There's a second.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Linville. Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That's a unanimous vote.
All right, thank you. Agenda item six is an amendment to the 2016 Schools Capital Projects Ordinance. It is for the Philo Hill Middle School project, and it provides kind of new funding, or funding that's been moved around, around $28,194,038. It increases the total project cost of $43,383,000, $43,383,345. And so there's been a number of questions about that. Don't know if all the questions have gotten resolved, but Daryl Walker is here. If you've got any further questions on that.
Move approval.
Approval by Commissioner Plaller?
I'll second for the purpose of discussion, but I do have a question for Mr. Walker.
Second by Commissioner Bessie. Discussion?
Mr. Walker, as you're coming up, the only question that I haven't been able to get answered following conversation with one of the board members is confirmation, has the Easton Elementary addition and partial renovation project been completed?
Yes, sir.
Thank you.
You will notice in the letter, there is about $100,000 left in that account based on the letter that we sent, and there's some signage work that we're waiting to do that got caught up in the supply chain, but within the next three to four weeks, it'll be, that'll be completed. But all the construction's been completed.
Very good. Thank you.
I do have a question for Mr. Walker, and I appreciate, Mr. Walker, you coming today to entertain any questions and share your feedback around moving dollars around to renovate Philo Hill. And again, I'll disclaim, I'm trying to stay on the commissioner's side instead of the school board's side around this project, but I think that as a community, we want to invest in renovations that will yield an investment in, you know, workforce, especially in a time now where a lot of the schools, if they're renovating, not repair, because of dollars that's there, you probably can make the repair. And I know we went down this path of option one, two, or three when I was on the school board. And then and now, I believe that if you're going to renovate, you should renovate with workforce development, some kind of tangible outcome for our students. And so I know that the superintendent has talked about a STEAM, STEM, I don't know, but I really would like to know if you have any feedback right now from the school system around renovating the school to what would it look like? How will it accommodate vocational interest?
Yeah, absolutely. So this thing has taken a lot of different paths over the years, going back probably three years. So it started out kind of as a major, kind of major renovation. There's a lot of ADA issues on that campus that really weren't being met within the renovation piece, which started some of these other discussions about some further work that need to be done there. The programming became a big discussion, right? So we knew we had to do something there, different there. I just, to be honest with you, I mean, there are 1,500 kids that live in that residential zone that are middle school age, and 500 of them go to Philo. So where 1,000 kids at, right? So we know where they are, and they're overcrowding some other facilities. So programmatic-wise, you really got to look at programs and culture and climate within your buildings to get people to want to feel safe and want to come home, right? So there's a lot of discussion around that. The board originally made it, we talked, they talked about performing arts, and then it went to STEM, and it's currently being programmed as a STEAM school, which is basically a STEM school with an arts component to it, right? So the STEM piece of that can go a lot of different directions. It can go aeronautical, it could go engineering, it could go computer programming, it can go a lot of different ways, and that decision hasn't been made yet from a programmatic standpoint of which thread you're going to go down. But we do know that we are designing the building for a STEAM curriculum.
And for the good of the public, STEAM, science, technology, engineering, arts, and math, just those are some broad focus areas. And so my concern is around if you're talking about, you know, technology or science, you know, aviation and aeronautics is a big thing in our state, and the county has invested in Smith Reynolds. But there are a multitude of different, you know, very distinct vocational pathways that the district could be more deliberate so that when you are renovating, and by design, you can kind of incorporate some of those assets in the work instead of coming back later and saying, oh, we need dollars for this because we didn't really plan to do this until after. And so that's, you know, I just want us to be cooperating with the school system in this effort, because I believe that, you know, the students there should have a premier building. But I also think that if we're going to allow reinvestment in the building, that it should be in a very purposeful way with the needs of, you know, workforce. And I don't want to belabor the issue, but I would ask the other commissioners to consider, you know, getting feedback from the district around how close is the district in coming to some consensus around what the renovation, what the programming will look like to make sure that the school is at full capacity with a strong program so that, you know, we're not building more schools later because the community kids just don't choose to go to that school.
Yeah, technology-wise, it'll be fully loaded for whatever strand we want to go down. It's the software piece that you have to go as part of the instructional component that will separate us a little bit, but there's still more conversation to come on that. I don't have a clear-cut path for you right now other than the STEAM, but I do know that there are conversations being had about what that looks like.
Further questions? Thank you, Daryl, for being here. We have a motion and a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Did Don, Dr. Martin, vote?
Yeah, I believe he actually was trying to get his volume squared away, so he went out and came back in, probably in the process of coming back in right now.
Now we wait. The vote was six, one, but the one was not a negative vote.
Okay, all right, very good. Agenda item seven is a resolution approving the community-based juvenile delinquency, substance abuse, and gang prevention plan for fiscal year 23/24 and authorizing submission for state approval and implementation. That's actually the plan we submit to the state, and if I did my math correctly, I think there were 11 programs recommended for funding.
Is there a motion?
Move approval.
Moved to approve by Commissioner Plaller?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Bessie. Their discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That's unanimous.
Very good. We have--
Madam Vice Chair, if I may, you may want to allow the chair to vote on the past motion, the prior one.
Okay. Dr. Martin, could you vote on item six? Could you raise your hand, please? Okay, item six is unanimous. Thank you.
Thanks, Courtney. All right. Agenda item eight is a resolution authorizing execution of the necessary documents to apply for and accept if awarded a grant from the GlaxoSmithKline Foundation and the North Carolina Public Health Association. It's a $10,000 grant. There'll be a program in the local schools related to tattoo.edu programs, and it's basically to educate teenagers about health risks associated with tattoos.
Move approval.
Motion by Commissioner Plaller?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Bessie. Discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That's unanimous.
All right. We have several contractual matters. Item nine has four parts, but it's a resolution ratifying and authorizing execution of interlocal agreements between Forsyth County and communities that have community policing services through the Sheriff's Department, and that's the Village of Clemens, the Town of Lewisville, the Town of Ruhl Hall, and the Town of Walker Town. And those, you know, those contracts are a little bit differently based on how many services each community wants to provide, but one action would approve all four contracts.
Move approval.
Motion to approve by Commissioner Plaller?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Bessie. Is there discussion? Not. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
That is a unanimous vote.
All right. Agenda item 10 is a resolution ratifying and authorizing execution of an interlocal agreement between Forsyth County and the Winston-Salem Forsyth County Board of Education for the provision of school resource officer deputy services. This is 39 SRO positions. It pretty much is the same level of service provided in previous years. Our budget and management staff, particularly Ms. Bussie, provided a pretty detailed analysis of how those cost increases and what the source of those cost increases were to the school system. And just a reminder for the new, for the new board members, the accounting's a little bit complicated because the funds are essentially, for these services, are part of the allocation to the Winston-Salem Forsyth County School Board. And then, so there's essentially an expenditure over there. It shows back as up as a revenue in the Sheriff's Department, and then an associated expenditure in the Sheriff's Department. And essentially that provides that the schools are the lead in developing the level of service and essentially negotiating those contracts so that they are essentially the customer.
Move approval.
Motion to approve by Commissioner Plaller?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Bessie. Is there discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
That is unanimous. Thank you.
All right. Item 11 is a resolution awarding a contract to P&amp;G Security Guard Incorporated. They're doing business as P&amp;G Security for contracted private security services at the Forsyth County Law Enforcement Detention Center. This is a contract really designed around improving safety in that facility, particularly given the staffing issues that we have. It's a contract not to exceed 28, 2.2 million, $829,914.64. It is one of those contracts that we have to fairly carefully monitor because we have, essentially, we're essentially funding it using salary savings. And so the idea is that as staffing improves, we'll be able to reduce our reliance on that particular contract.
Move approval.
Motion to approve by Commissioner Plaller? Second by Commissioner Bessie. Discussion? All those in favor say aye.
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 That's unanimous. Thank you.
Sounds like we did get volume back for Commissioner McDaniel. I don't know if, Commissioner Martin, do we have audio on your side yet?
I don't think, I can hear you. Can you hear me?
For the first time, we just could. So we do have audio now.
Are you good?
That's right.
Great.
Very good. Okay, thank you. Agenda item 12 is a resolution authorizing execution of agreement between Forsyth County and Wake Forest University Health Sciences for medical direction services for emergency medical services. This is a two-year agreement not to exceed $284,806, and essentially provides medical direction to EMS, but also has the benefit of the fellows that work under our medical director as assistant medical director.
Move approval.
Motion to approve by Commissioner Plaller and second by Commissioner Bessie. Is there discussion? All those in favor, please say aye.
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 Thank you. That's unanimous.
All right. Agenda item 13 is a resolution authorizing a term extension on the agreement between Forsyth County and Seth Palmer, if I say that right, doing business as Motivated Metal. Essentially extends, this is a public art project that the board approved, and it would extend the deadline for that to November 30th.
Move approval.
Motion by Commissioner Plaller?
Second. It's not a dandelion.
Second by Commissioner Bessie. Discussion other than the dandelion. All in favor say aye.
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 That's unanimous.
Very good. Item 14 is a resolution awarding a contract to IL Long Construction Company Incorporated for renovation of the Smith Reynolds Airport Terminal renovation project. Project has been in, under consideration for quite some time, and a lot of work has been done on that. This would, this would award the contract to IL Long for $11,153,000, and it, they were the lowest responsible, responsive bidder on this project, and we're eager to do a groundbreaking here before too long, get that project started.
Move approval.
Motion to approve by Commissioner Plaller?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Bessie. Discussion? All those in favor say aye.
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 That's unanimous. Thank you.
All right. And just something to be thinking about when you walk in that, when they do the final ribbon cutting on it, there's going to be an airplane hanging from the ceiling, if you remember. So just be prepared for that.
Which one of the commissioners is going to be in the airplane?
We, we'll let y'all decide that.
Move approval.
Very good. All right. Item 15 is a resolution authorizing execution of a contract to provide mortgage-style foreclosure legal services. This is a contract with Mark D. Bardell. It's doing business as Zakiya Legal Services, and this is a three-year agreement not to exceed $1,190,000.
Move approval.
Motion to approve by Commissioner Plaller?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Linville. Discussion? All those in favor say aye.
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 That's unanimous.
All right. You have a number of property matters. Three of these are with Daymark Recovery Services Incorporated for property located at 650 Island Avenue. That's items 16, 17, and 18. Unless the attorney tells me something different, probably can take all those together. Item 16 would lease-- Item 16 would lease 10,744 square feet. Item 17 would lease 710, and then item 18 would lease 1,1022. They really do facilitate a lot of the construction that's going to be underway in that facility, and they are at that lease rate, which is essentially the cost recovery lease rate we have for behavioral health services where they're providing a service that we're also funding. And so rather than charge them a market rate rent, we we charge that cost recovery rent for those because we're actually funding part of the the increase. So part of the county in-kind support to that is, you know, is is part of that lease rate. So anyway, I think you can take 16, 17, 18 together.
Move approval of items 16 through 18.
Motion to approve by Commissioner Plaller. Second by Commissioner Bessie. Is there discussion? Not. All those in favor say aye.
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 That is unanimous.
Okay. Item 19 is a resolution authorizing execution of a lease agreement between Forsyth County and Wake Forest University Health Sciences for lease of county-owned property, excuse me, located at 3325 Silas Creek Parkway. That is the old Amos Cottage program that is there, really adjacent almost to the emergency room there at Forsyth Medical Center's complex. This is a nominal lease rate. It essentially extends the long-term agreement that we've had there as they have given us indication that they exit, they are exiting that long-term agreement. This is just a period of time for them to get out, for us to do an assessment of the facility and also make a determination if that is really surplus property to the county or if it's if we have a need. So we've got some work to do on that, but but it'll essentially extend that. And this is for, this is unchanged as it was originally put in. I think this is a one-year lease with a six-month.
Move approval.
Motion to approve by Commissioner Plaller.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Limble. Is there discussion? All those in favor?
Can you hear me?
Yes.
Can you hear me? I actually, I think the decision on what to do with that property can be made in less than a year. Because if I understand that there's a chance that ATRM may be using, continuing that program itself, and if they are, I think that the cost, it's not a nominal lease anymore, it becomes a normal lease. And I think that decision could be made in less time than a full year. I'm in favor of continuing, but I'm not in favor of the of the whole year deal. I think it needs to be something more like 90 days to 180 days.
Yeah, Kirby may be able to respond to it a little bit. Essentially, they are constructing a facility to house some of these. But before I say too much, I better turn it over to Kirby, sir.
Yes, sir. Chairman Martin, I appreciate the question and the comment. I think our proposal was actually based on the amount of time it would take ATRM to renovate alternate locations for the Amos Cottage programs that are in the facility. The disposition analysis that we could go through, obviously, yes, sir, could be done in less than a year. But ATRM, of course, has actually been insisting on a two-year agreement based on their construction schedule and alternate location. So I think you very well will see an extension request from them over the next year to really go out another six months beyond 18 months.
Yeah, and at that point, we would certainly not-
I guess, I guess my thinking is then they should they should simply be paying for it what the lease rate should be. The arrangement, we just got to approving several contracts with them where we're paying full, full, full amount for all sorts of issues. If they're going to use that facility, the nonprofit no longer exists, then I think they need to be paying for it while they're renovating. That's kind of the cost of doing business.
I don't disagree with you, Commissioner Martin. Could we have further discussion on this and vote later, or is it?
Madam Vice Chair, just just as a point of clarification, the way the proposed agreement is written, Baptist would be able to be in that property for a year, and then both parties would have to agree to an additional six months.
Okay. Is that helpful, Commissioner Martin?
Not a lot, because because a year's lease in the buildings, a year's lease. And I mean, we've had some discussions in the last several months about basically the business relationships. We're paying for services, and I think they're paying, that we have something that they're using of ours, I think they ought to be paying.
Is there further discussion from the board on this subject? Commissioner Bessie?
As I recall, the the current lease expires at the end of this month, June, so we kind of need to make a decision one way or another today. So otherwise, you know, I'd say, why don't we postpone and have further discussion? So, I mean, unless there were a substitute motion to do it, to offer a 90-day extension during which there'd be further discussions.
And that that very way could be-
I'd be happy to make that substitute motion, that we consider a 90-day extension at the current terms with a decision made in 90 days on appropriate lease.
I would second that motion.
We have a motion and a second that we extend the lease for 90 days at this point. Is that correct?
Yes.
So, Madam Vice Chair, just to clarify, that is the correct motion that is before you. So if you you would need to vote on that motion, that would amend the original motion. And if that passes, then you would need to vote as to whether you want a 90-day lease.
Okay. I'm confused.
I can, it's a parliamentary procedure issue. A substitute motion technically is on whether or not you substitute the the suggestion for the original motion, and then that becomes the main motion. And if if the substitute passed, you're probably going to pass, but you have to take the second vote.
Oh, yeah. Okay, so I knew about substitute, but yeah, okay.
Procedure.
Okay.
Would it make it any easier if the original motion was withdrawn? I'll withdraw the second. If that makes it any simpler, does it, Mr. Attorney?
I think you can go ahead and vote on what you have before you. It'll, it was described better by Commissioner Bessie than I described, but what he said was absolutely correct.
Okay, we're going to vote on the substitute motion. Further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
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 That's unanimous.
Oh, I was going to say no.
Oh, I'm sorry. It's six to one with Commissioner Woodbury voting in opposition.
So now we vote on the main motion.
Now we will vote on the main motion.
Which is what we just approved.
Which essentially would be the 90-day lease extension, which would give us, Kirby can go back and and really talk. And I think what I'm hearing the board say is that you really want to talk about some remuneration in this, in the in this part of it. And so we'll have some marching orders to go back and and figure out what that what that might be, which will be a little bit complicated because, you know, that that property's been under a under a long-term lease for a long, long period of time. And so, you know, understanding what what some of the holding costs to that are and how you factor in what a lease rate and all that is.
Sounds like we're talking about a triple net type of lease where we would keep the holding costs on the tenant's side, and we're looking at a rate for the use of the land in the facility.
Yeah, what we were, at the staff level, as this was originally kind of discussed, it was, it was, they've had it for a long period of time. There is the open question about what activities are in there, are enterprise activities for the medical center, and what were more philanthropic activities that were being conducted in that? My suspicion is the board really does care about what philanthropic activities might have been in there versus what are really enterprise activities. And so we'll go back and understand that better and try to try to bring that back to you.
Okay, group, we're going to vote.
I'd like to make the motion. We approve the amended motion.
It's already on the floor, Dr. Martin.
Yeah.
We're gonna, we're gonna vote on-
We're gonna vote on-
Pardon?
Aye.
Okay. Okay, we're voting on the motion to extend the lease 90 days. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those in the opposition?
No, I was waiting for the discussion part for this. Sorry. I just wanted to, I think, put on record that I think we're kind of delaying the inevitable and kicking this down, kicking the can down the road a little longer. And, you know, I just like to try to be supportive of the direction that staff bring to us to be more concise. But I understand, you know, the careful review of this commission, but I just wanted to make record that I appreciate, and I'm sure we, I know we all do, the work of staff. And I just want to make sure that we are, you know, empowering staff to bring these decisions so that things can get done in a convenient way for our community. But thank you.
You're welcome. That motion was approved six to one with Commissioner Woodbury voting in opposition.
Very good. Agenda item 20 is a resolution declaring certain county motor vehicles and equipment surplus property and authorizing their sale. Essentially, would would sell these vehicles at an auction to be held August 12 through the 23rd, has an online component and a in an active law auction period component, and it's Rogers Realty and Auction Services.
Move approval.
Motion to approve by Commissioner Plaller and a second by Commissioner Bessie. Discussion. All those in favor say aye.
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 That is unanimous.
All right. There are a bunch of appointments, and your normal appointment reader is you. So you've got the double duty, Madam Chair. I'm sorry.
Well, go ahead. That'd be great.
I've been I've been tapped in as the substitute reader of-
Okay.
That's great. Go for it.
Do we want to take them all, take, well, take them one at a time?
Please.
All right. The first one's 21. It's 16 appointments to the Adult Care Home Community Advisory Committee. There are 10 open slots available and six administrator slots available. Two citizens applied for open spots. They can they can be appointed at once, and we can continue the remaining 14 appointments for consideration in the next round of appointments, and I so move.
Have a motion to appoint these folks by acclamation. Do we have a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Woodbury. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
That's unanimous.
The Animal Services, it's 22, six appointments to Animal Services Advisory Board. There was one appointment available for the acting chairman, president of the Forsyth County Veterinarian Association. There were no applicants, so this automatically, I think, gets continued to a future meeting.
Got a motion?
Yes.
Second.
Second.
We have a motion by Commissioner Bessie and a second by Commissioner Plaller. All in favor say aye.
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 Unanimous. Okay.
23, two- I'm so sorry. There was there was still an animal services, and these are the the two at-large seats. There are two applicants, and they can be appointed together by acclamation, and I so move.
Motion by Commissioner Bessie.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Plaller. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye. Aye.
It's unanimous.
And finally, Animal Services Advisory Board, there is one appointment available for the owner of an animal other than a dog or cat. There are two applicants. We only have one seat, and so this one we need to do a
A vote.
A vote. May I ask, Madam Chair, is this normally a written vote?
It is a written vote, and you have to sign your name. You check which one you vote. You can vote for one.
Then we turn that in.
Yes, and manager will pick that up.
Just just as a clarification, Commissioner Bessie, this this is a written vote, and in the minutes, it does indicate who voted for which candidate.
Okay, very good.
Vice Chair Christina Griffin received unanimous vote.
Thank you.
And one final, under Animal Services Advisory Board, there is available one appointment for a two-year term for an officer in Forsyth County Animal Welfare Organization. There were no applicants, so this would need to be continued to a future meeting, and I would say move.
A motion by Commissioner Bessie, a second by, I'll second the motion, and we'll continue this to a future meeting. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
That's unanimous.
And one, I'm sorry, one more on Animal Services Advisory Board. One appointment for reserved for owner of a fertile hunting dog, and there is an incumbent wishing to serve, can be appointed by acclamation, and I so move.
Is that a motion?
Yes, ma'am.
Have a motion by Commissioner Bessie, a second.
Second.
All in favor say aye.
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 That's unanimous.
Now we finally get to 23. Two appointments are available to the Community Appearance Commission, Winston-Salem Forsyth County. These are limited to those with special experience or education in design. There were no qualified applicants, and therefore I move that be continued to a future meeting.
Motion by Commissioner Bessie.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Plaller. All in favor say aye.
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 That's unanimous.
Item 24, eight appointments available to Community Child Protection Team Child Fatality Prevention Team. Eight appointments were available. There were no applicants. I move that this be continued to a future meeting for consideration.
Have a motion by Commissioner Bessie.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Plaller. I would like to say that I do believe this committee is a very important committee, and I'm saddened that we did not have any appointment or applications. And hopefully in the future, we can advertise this in a different manner. All those in favor say aye.
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 That's unanimous.
Item 25, three appointments to the Environmental Assistance and Protection Board. There are three appointments available. These are open, and there are three incumbents wishing to be served. They can be appointed by acclamation, and I so move.
Motion by Commissioner Bessie.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Plaller. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
That's unanimous.
There is one appointment, item 26, available to the Equalization and Review Board. There's one open seat. Two citizens have applied, and therefore this needs to be by the written ballot.
Madam Chair, is it appropriate for us to have any comments regarding any of these citizens wishing to serve, or we just make the silent vote?
Everyone just has their own choice, and you can vote for one.
Vice Chair Mustafa Shabazz received a majority vote.
Thank you.
And Madam Chair, it's been been called to my attention that I should have been calling individuals' names for their information with, may I go back and?
No.
No?
That's fine.
Okay.
The clerk will notify those folks that they were appointed.
Thank you. There are two appointments available to the Forsyth County Historic Resources Commission. One of those is restricted to the owner of a local historic landmark property. There were no applicants for that seat, and therefore I move that that be- There were no applicants for that seat, and therefore I move that that be continued to a future meeting.
Motion by Commissioner Bessie.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Plaller. All in favor say aye?
Aye.
That's unanimous.
And now, there is one at-large seat available for appointment. There are six citizens wishing to serve, so this is a balloting question.
Is that a motion to...
Yes, ma'am. So move.
Motion by Commissioner Bessie.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Plaller. All those in favor?
Aye.
That's unanimous.
Aye.
Vice Chair Shanita Johnson received majority vote.
Thank you.
There, item 28, three appointments available Forsyth County Home and Community Care Block Grant Advisory Council. There were no applicants, so therefore move that that be continued to a future meeting.
Motion by Commissioner Bessie.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Plaller. All in favor say aye?
Aye.
Aye.
That's unanimous.
Item 29 is 17 appointments to the Forsyth County Juvenile Crime Prevention Council, fortuitously. That there are a number of applicants matching up with available seats. Therefore, I move appointment to at-large seats Denise Hartsfield, Al Wadu Jabar, Jack Manell, Cynthia Collins, Lori Edwards, Chitara Smith, and Clinton Wilson for a local parks situation. Phoua Martin, and that's P-H-O-U-A, if I have mispronounced your name, my apologies. And appointment to a seat representing the district attorney, Andrew Keever. I move approval of all those appointments.
Second.
Motion by Commissioner Bessie, second by Commissioner Plaller. All in favor, please say aye?
Aye.
And there are several, several seats available, and I move that those be continued for future consideration.
Second.
There's a motion by Commissioner Bessie and second by Commissioner Plaller. The first motion was unanimous. All in favor of this motion to continue the appointment, say aye?
Aye.
That's unanimous.
Thank you. There is one appointment to the Forsyth Technical Community College Board of Trustees There are four applicants for that position, I believe.
Yes. Commissioner Bessie, if I could, I'd like to make a motion that we continue the Forsyth Tech Community College until our next meeting, for us to have a policy question answered if we want to make this an appointment for one of the county commissioners, or if we want to make it an appointment for a community resident. So I would ask that we continue this until our next meeting. Second. Second by Commissioner Woodbury. All in favor say aye?
Aye.
Thank you.
Item number 31, there are four appointments available to the Industrial Facilities and Pollution Control Financing Authority. There is one applicant, Ms. Chitara Smith, and therefore I would move appointment of Ms. Smith to one of these four appointments and the continuance of the continuation of the remaining appointments.
Second.
Motion by Commissioner Bessie, second by Commissioner Plaller. All in favor, please say aye?
Aye.
That's unanimous.
Item 32, one appointment to the Jury Commission. There is one seat available, one applicant, Ms. Tasha Wilson. I move approval of Ms. Wilson as the appointee.
Motion by Commissioner Bessie.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Plaller. A second by Commissioner Plaller and Commissioner McDaniel. All those in favor, please say aye?
Aye.
Opposed?
Aye.
That's unanimous.
Item 33 is two appointments to the Library Board. There are two open seats, and there are two applicants, Ms. Peggy Light and Ms. Donna Staley. I move approval of Ms. Light and Ms. Staley.
Second.
Motion by Commissioner Bessie, second by Commissioner Plaller. All those in favor, please say aye?
Aye.
That's unanimous.
Item 34, there are 12 appointments available to the Nursing Home Community Advisory Committee for Forsyth County. There are 12 appointments available. There is one applicant for one of the eight open slots, Ms. Debbie Cornetzer. I move approval of Ms. Cornetzer's appointment and to continue the remaining appointment slots for administrators' positions and seven open slots to a future meeting.
Second.
Motion by Commissioner Bessie, second by Commissioner Plaller. All in favor, please say aye?
Aye.
That's unanimous.
Piedmont Tribe Airport Authority, there is one appointment available. There is one applicant, Mr. Graham Bennett. I move approval of Mr. Bennett's appointment to this seat.
Second.
Motion by Commissioner Bessie, second by Commissioner Plaller. All those in favor, please say aye?
Aye.
That's unanimous.
Item 36, there are nine appointments available to Piedmont Tribe Regional Workforce Development There are three applicants, Mr. Alvin Warwick for organized labor base seat, Ms. Sherri Carpenter for community base seat, and Ms. Beverly Frey for the Wagner Pizer seat. I move appointment, approval of Mr. Warwick, Ms. Carpenter, and Ms. Frey to the designated seats and the continuance of the remaining seats for future consideration.
Second.
Motion by Commissioner Bessie and second by Commissioner Plaller. All in favor, please say aye?
Aye.
That's unanimous. Thank you.
Item 37, there is one appointment available to the City County Planning Board. There are two applicants, and I move that this be handled by ballot.
Have a motion by Commissioner Bessie. I'll second that. All in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Vice Chair Shannon Stanley received unanimous vote.
Thank you.
Item 38, there is one appointment available to the Utility Commission. This is an open seat with a joint appointment with the city of Winston-Salem. There is one applicant, Lindsay Schwab. I move approval of applicant Schwab.
That's the planning board.
I'm sorry, Planning Board. Planning Board.
Second.
Motion by Commissioner Bessie, second by Commissioner Plaller. All in favor, say aye?
Aye.
That's unanimous.
Thank you, Madam Chair, for the correction.
That's fine.
Jumping ahead there. All right. Now we're at the Utilities Commission. One appointment available and one applicant. I move the approval of Hugh Jernigan for appointment to this Utilities Commission seat.
Second.
Motion by Commissioner Bessie, second by Commissioner Plaller. All in favor, please say aye?
Aye.
Thank you. That's unanimous.
Let me double check. All right. We have one appointment available to the Winston-Salem Forsyth County Schools Education Foundation. There is one applicant. I move approval of Neil Tackeberry to this seat.
Second.
Motion by Commissioner Bessie, second by Commissioner Plaller. All in favor, please say aye?
Aye.
That's six with Commissioner Woodbury out of the room.
Item 44, four appointments to the Zoning Board of Adjustment for Forsyth County. There were no applicants. I move that this matter be continued to a future meeting.
Second.
Motion by Commissioner Bessie, second by Commissioner Plaller. All in favor, please say aye?
Aye.
That's six in favor.
Item 41, one appointment to the Zoning Board of Adjustment for Kearnsville. There is one seat available for a member who resides outside the town limits of Kearnsville, one applicant. I move the approval of the appointment to Suzanne Meyer to this seat.
Second.
Motion by Commissioner Bessie, second by Commissioner Plaller. All in favor, please say aye?
Aye.
That is approved by six members.
And there was, I believe, a misplaced cheat sheet here. All right. Here we get to the zoning board, item 42, the Zoning Board of Adjustment for...
Winston-Salem.
Winston-Salem. And apologies, but I cannot find that sheet.
There were no applicants.
There weren't?
No applicants. So I've moved that this might be continued to a future meeting.
Second.
Motion by Commissioner Bessie, second by Commissioner Plaller. All in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Thank you so much, Commissioner Bessie.
Very good. That was pretty impressive, actually.
It wasn't impressive. You just got a point if you didn't know it.
That's right. Very good. All right. Last item is just a tax administration item. It's a resolution approving refunds by the Tax Assessor Collector in the amount of $14,545.22, and that was from the North Carolina Vehicle Tax System.
Move or approve?
Motion to approve by Commissioner Plaller. Second by Commissioner Limbaugh. All those in favor, please say aye? That is unanimous. Could I say one thing before we adjourn? I know it appeared that we went, other than the appointments and the items on the agenda, it appeared that we rushed through them, and they were all unanimous except maybe one. But we have two briefings, and we discuss each item two times very thoroughly before we vote on them. I just did not want the public to think that we just sit here and rubber stamp everything. So thank you.
And that is it, Madam Chair. So we just have the briefing.
I have a motion that we can adjourn and take a 10-minute break.
Move.
That's a motion by Commissioner Bessie.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Plaller. All in favor, say aye?
Aye.
That's unanimous. Thank you.
We're back in our meeting, waiting for our county manager. We're going to go over our briefing. Our briefing today is for our meeting of July 27, 2023, and he is arriving as I speak. So I'll turn the meeting over to our manager.
All right. Very good. Let me get my ducks in a row here for a second. All right. Do I need to say anything? Y'all got it? Okay, so we are briefing for the -- July's going to be a little strange, so we're going to be briefing for the July 27 meeting. Obviously, the meeting schedule has us not meeting next Thursday, has us meeting on the 13th, not meeting on the 20th, and meeting on the 27th. So our deadline for the items on this agenda are actually technically tomorrow. So as we go through the items that we have in place, I've reached out to the department and said, if you expect anything, let me know, and I'll mention it. But as we always have done, we'll get the public hearing matters kind of fully briefed, and then I'll run through the rest of the items. And then the only other item we have today is just that closed session item. Yes. Yes. So very good. So Chris.
Thank you. Good afternoon, commissioners. I do have three text amendments before you. One is truly UDO CC23, which is the last one I'll go over today, is titled "Nonsubstantive Changes," but I believe in looking at all three of them, all three of these, they're relatively minor compared to some of the ones we've had recently. The first text amendment is UDO CC21. It's a proposal by Planning and Development Services staff to amend Sections 3 and 11 of the UDO to ensure consistency in application of site triangle provisions throughout all of Forsyth County. In 2021, the North Carolina Legislature adopted new language specifying that measurements for site distances at intersections, including site triangles, must begin within the right-of-way or edge of pavement for municipalities. Prior to adoption of this language, municipalities could do site triangles through various methods. And the current UDO definition, which is a city-only definition, by the way, for site triangles states that site triangles shall be measured starting at the edge of the right-of-way or actually on the private property. I'm sorry. This definition, again, is currently city-specific, but site triangles are consistently requested by NCDOT through review process throughout Forsyth County. This proposal will amend the definition of site triangles to state that the measurement begins at the edge of pavement. It will convert the definition from a city-only definition to a county-wide definition, and it will replace the existing graphic in the UDO. The image on the right is not the existing graphic that's in the UDO, but it is how we currently do measure site distance triangles. They're at the edge of the right-of-way but on the property line of the property in question. The state statute requirement is what is shown on the right, which shows that 10-by-70 site triangle easement being within the right-of-way at the edge of pavement. The state adopted this language, again, back in 2021. The proposed amendment will amend the current definition to meet the state statute requirement, and the amendment will have no impact on the current review. Our staff has already incorporated this into our review process. This was heard by the planning board at their February 9, 2023, public hearing. There were no speakers in opposition, and the planning board did vote unanimously to recommend approval of this request. And this was adopted by City Council on May 1, 2023. With that, I'll be glad to answer any questions.
Questions?
I did actually have a substantive question about that. It appears that the new definition requires measuring this as if the vehicle had rolled up to the stop bar that would be over the sidewalk. So when a car is stopping at one of these intersections, they have to move forward and block the sidewalk. Obviously, they're not on top of the sidewalk, but they're on -- it looks like they're -- they have to move forward to a point where a pedestrian using the sidewalk can't proceed across the intersection while they're there.
I would agree with that assessment.
So is this a mandatory change under state law?
Well, again, keep in mind, there's nothing currently in the county regulation that even provides how site triangles are done. Within municipalities, within Forsyth County, this is a state mandate. This is a state requirement. We felt like for the ease of simplicity, for the ease of enforcement, for the ease of clarity, clarification, and explaining this to folks, it would be better to have the same definition both in the city and the county.
And at some point, the statute was either changed or clarified to, in essence, require that the visibility be measured from the point of view of a driver whose car is blocking passage of pedestrians across that intersection when there is a car stopped there.
What I would say is that this was probably a property rights clarification in that the way the site triangle used to be, you came back from -- you went to the edge of the right-of-way, i.e., on the property, came back 10 feet, and then went down the road 70 feet, which took that 10-by-70 area out of being able to put a sign or any other piece of -- any other use on the property out of the equation. So yes, whenever the General Assembly changed this for municipalities to make it uniform throughout the state, they made it where you have to do what's on the second image on the screen, which, like you say, does potentially block the sidewalk.
I would love to have that noted to our representative in Raleigh as a question of concern. Is that something that -- I mean, that's obviously, that's not the agenda item, but...
I'll defer to the attorney on that.
That's certainly something we could look into.
Thank you.
Other questions? I don't believe so, Chris.
The second item that I have is entitled UDO CC22, and this is something that the City Council adopted, and it's related to actually something on the last meeting that y'all just had an appointment for, the Historic Resources Commission. But this is basically concurrence of the change that the city has made to their appointment structure. This would amend Chapter 10 of the UDO to modify the structure of the Forsyth County Historic Resources Commission for the city appointees. The HRC is currently a 12-member board, five appointed by the county commissioners, five members appointed by the county commissioners, five members appointed by the city of Winston-Salem, and then one member each appointed by the Village of Clemens and the town of Kernersville, as they are also certified local governments. Currently, the city of Winston-Salem appoints one at-large member and four categorical members. Forsyth County appoints three at-large members, one member that you just appointed to serve an expired term. Then there are two categorical members that the county appoints, one being a licensed architect and one being a property owner of a local historic landmark, and that was the one that y'all discontinued to the next cycle because you didn't have an applicant. The Winston-Salem categorical seats are based on -- there are two seats that are based on residence location, one within the historic -- an H district, which is either within Old Salem or Bethabera, or -- and a historic overlay district, which is someone who lives within West End. And then there are two professional qualifications seats. An archaeologist, landscape architect, arborist, planner, or surveyor is one seat, and an architectural historian or historic preservationist being another. This change is to eliminate those two professional qualification seats, what are indicated in yellow, and convert those from professional qualifications to at-large. So you would have three at-large and two categorical, which would be the same as what the county has. This was the research that we did in looking at what our other peer communities have. There's only one other unit of certified local government, kind of our size in the state, that has any professional categories, and that's the Durham Historic Preservation Commission. All the rest of them don't have any professional categories. Again, this request is to change those two categorical seats to two at-large seats. Those categorical seats are rooted in the 1948 creation of the Board of Architecture Review for the Old Salem Historic District, which was the precursor to the current HRC. And that was the time when the planning -- when the planning department didn't have any professional historic preservation staff. Currently, we do have two full-time staff members who are overly qualified to handle these items. This change will broaden the pool of potential HRC members. Again, if you have qualifications that have to be met, you're artificially shrinking the pool of potential applicants who could serve on the HRC. This, again, this change will bring the HRC into line with the membership structure of commissions and peer communities around the state, and it will result in the city and county having similar at-large and categorical appointment opportunities. This amendment will have no impact on current members in these seats as their terms expire in November of '23 and June of '26, so they'll continue to serve and have the -- and can reapply if they haven't run their maximum amount of time on the HRC. The HRC did recommend this change after discussion at their July 2022 retreat. This change was presented to the Community Development Housing General Government Committee as an information back in -- item back in October. After a presentation, public hearing for community members, no one spoke at the March 9 planning board meeting, and the planning board did recommend approval of this request. And this was adopted by City Council on June 5, 2023. This is coming before you because currently the HRC regulations in the UDO are -- have both jointly been adopted by the city and the county. We could have slapped a W on this, but we just felt like it was easier just to have your concurrence with this. So with that, I'm glad to answer any questions. Our recommendation is for approval.
Questions of Chris? Thank you, Chris.
Thank you. And then finally, the last item that I have today is UDO CC23, which is a proposal by staff to amend Chapters 3, 4, 5, 9, and 11 for miscellaneous nonsubstantive changes to the UDO language. I hope that you received another memo that I wrote to the county manager on Tuesday that sought to condense this even further than what the staff report did. These nonsubstantive changes are prepared periodically to keep the UDO up to date and provide clarifications. This is actually our first up-to-date -- our update since we went live with UDO clear code back in 2021, I believe. These nonsubstantive changes are revisions that have no effect on the intent or enforceability of standards. Revisions are proposed when staff discovers unintentional emissions or inconsistencies within the text, often as a result of changes made in previous UDO amendments, including the transition to UDO clear code. There are two minor changes to the zoning map amendment process in Chapter 3. There's one minor change to the establishment of the NCO in Chapter 4, correcting an omission to the principal use table and revising specific standards for two uses, both in Chapter 5, reserving a nonconforming subsection in Chapter 9, and then revising, I believe it's 11 different definitions in Chapter 11. The zoning map amendment section in Chapter 3, the neighborhood outreach summaries must now include the outcomes of the meeting, not just a statement that they held a meeting, but what was discussed, and if any changes were made to the plan. The requirement for a pre-application conference for the special use limited or special use no-site plan district has been removed. We've actually had this in our ordinance for 15 years and had never actually met with a single applicant on that, because generally speaking, they're going through some type of a process with us anyway, whether it be a sketch plan review or coming in and discussing it via email or a phone call. So we felt like it was time to eliminate that section. The NCO provision in Chapter 4, this is changed to reflect a change that was made in state law with the adoption of 160D. There's a provision that says there's an ability to do a nonpetitioning owner rezoning in the UDO for an NCO. But you can't propose any type of restriction that would constitute a downzoning. Most NCO provisions deal with setbacks or perhaps a build-to-line and those kind of things, but if you have a setback and a minimum lot width that's greater than what the ordinance requires, and you put those things in tandem, you could effectively be downzoning someone's property. If you have an RS9 zoning district, but your requirements that you come up with an NCO requires you to have a 20,000-square-foot lot, you've essentially downzoned that property because you've gone from, you know, from four and a half lots per acre to two lots per acre. So we wanted to go in and put this provision in there as a clear indication that if you propose changes or a number of changes that would constitute a downzoning, you have to have the signature of every property owner of record. So that's what that does. In the principal use table in Chapter 5, we did add a reference to the use-specific standards that prohibits electronic sweepstakes operations. This is a Winston-Salem-only provision, so it's, again, not really applicable to the county. Also, under the use-specific standards for planned residential development, we removed the three-acre minimum site size for GMAs 3 and 4 to allow for some additional flexibility for infill development. And we removed the five-acre minimum site size for multiple single-family dwellings on the same zoning lot. And then finally, on the use-specific standards for the buffer yard, there was a buffer yard requirement prior to us updating the UDO with a text amendment back in the late teens where we went in and changed our buffer yard standards. There used to be a 30-foot width buffer yard. We no longer have a 30-foot width in the ordinance, so we wanted to make the ordinance consistent with the widths of the buffer yards that we have. So we went from a 30-foot with an arbitrary planting requirement to a 20-foot that has a specified planting requirement, just like any other 20-foot type one buffer yard would have. It actually has more primary evergreens, which provides a more effective screening than the arbitrary numbers that were in there. So that was a change that was made. Under private swimming pools, we are removing the current fencing requirements that are in there and just basically referencing state statute, because there are building code requirements for swimming pools, and it shouldn't be in the UDO. Under the nonconforming provisions, again, this is a Winston-Salem-only provision. You remember several months ago, we changed the special use permit parking requirement section to remove the requirement to do that for restaurants. Electronic sweepstake operations have been left in there, but we don't allow electronic sweepstakes operations in the city. The county doesn't have that as a use, so we just need to reserve this section. And then finally, there are a number of definitions that were changed to replace unintentional emissions. There were some definitions that were in the environmental section, some definitions that were in the regular section of the UDO. Whenever we did UDO clear code, some of those got eliminated and/or deferred to the environmental ordinance as opposed to having the general definition in there. So that's what those changes do. A public hearing was held by the planning board on April 13. There were no speakers in opposition or support. Following the public hearing, the planning board voted to recommend approval with a 6-2 vote. There were two different provisions that two different planning board members took issue with, but this was considered by the City Council and adopted on June 5. And with that, I'll be glad to answer any questions.
Could you tell us the opposition, what they were opposed to?
One of the planning board members had a zoning case that was potentially going to come to the commissioners that had a limited use beside of their property, and they felt like that they wanted to know if we had had this meeting. And that's actually how it came to our attention, that this provision was in the ordinance to have this meeting. And, you know, basically, we communicated that, you know, we had never had these meetings in 15 years and felt like we needed to take it out. So that planning board member voted against it. For that reason, another planning board member voted against the change to the buffer yard standard for the PRDs. And that has a long history. There was a time when we had a buffer yard requirement in PRDs, and then in the mid-2000s, we took the requirement totally out of the ordinance for the PRDs. In the early 2010s, we put it back in. This person has long been associated with the Neighborhood Alliance, and they had -- they wanted that buffer yard standard put back in there. He felt like by changing it from 30 feet to 20 feet, we were effectively making a substantial change. Our argument was, yes, we're reducing the width slightly, but it's from an enforcement standpoint, and the landscaping that's going in there is actually a better buffer than what we currently have. So those were the two items of concern, and they both stated they didn't have any problems with anything else, but they had -- each had a problem with those respective sections.
Thank you. Further questions? Chris?
Thank you.
Thank you.
All righty. So I'll do a quick review of the other items that we'll brief fully on July the 13th, and there's a few -- I'll review what's on the agenda, and then I'll mention a few that I know will come into us by close of business Friday. So budget and finance items, you've got a resolution authorizing the expenditure of opioid settlement funds. That essentially takes -- uses opioid settlement funds to fund our FROSS program, which is the public health program around addressing the opioid issues in the community, and they've been a real leader in that. So you'll hear from Denise on that. You've got a couple of contracts. You've got a contract with Stryker Sales LLC, essentially a maintenance agreement on the two pieces of equipment that EMS carries kind of across the system, the LifePak monitor defibrillators, absolutely essential piece of equipment, and the Lucas chest compression devices, which is a fairly new device that we've got on the ambulances. So if you want us to bring in and show you a demo, we can certainly do that, but this is the maintenance service agreement for that. You've got a resolution for temporary employment for one-stop early voting. Every year, the elections office receives bids. We received bids this year using the informal process, since we're not required to use a formal process through that. And so we've gotten really good competitive pricing on that, and so Tim will bring that to you. This meeting cycle is where John will do the annual settlement and also the order to collect for taxes. And so John usually goes through a pretty exhaustive presentation of what collection efforts look like, how that, you know, how they do that, and how we try to work with citizens and those issues. So you'll hear directly from John on that. My recollection is we were debating about when to do the detailed part of that, and so I think we landed on the 13th. So when we're back in here the next Thursday, two Thursdays from now, you'll hear that presentation. So it looks like a pretty light agenda. We -- I know we're going to receive a couple of other items. One of them is we've got an opportunity to apply for some Golden Leaf grant money. I think they really want to see an application that bubbles up out of the county, because Ted Lord actually called me and said, make sure you're applying this cycle. So we are in the process of evaluating projects. They are looking for innovative projects, and so we're trying to meet all the deadlines for submission to that within our meeting schedule. And so we'll work -- that'll either be a discussion item or it'll be an agenda action item, depending on how we -- how much progress we can make with that. There are two public health grant matters, both related to infant mortality responses and those kinds of things, and so Public Health's working on that. And then there's also going to be a request to use behavioral health dollars for the Sturmer House improvements. That's where we're trying to set up that crisis facility for youth in crisis to give us a buffer and help us try to deal better with the difficulty that we're having, trying to find placements for some of those youth. And so that's what we have right now. We're going to have to be a little flexible going through the next couple of Thursdays just because of the meeting cycle, but that's what we're working on right now.
Could I ask, Chantel, are you still having trouble from the state on that Sturmer House getting their approval?
Unfortunately, Vice Chair Wiz and Hunt, we submitted, as you know, the request in April 2022, so over a year now, and we have not received the approval. It sat at DHHS for over a year. Obviously, I've reached out to Secretary Kinsley, as well as I know you've talked to legislators and Chair Martin. At this point, they're saying it's sitting at the Centers for Medicaid at the federal government level, but my concern is they did not submit it to the federal government until recently. So Ms. Price and I have been working with partners on some other potential options because it does not seem like we're going to be able to rely on the state.
Thank you. That's a shame.
Yes, ma'am.
The last item, unless there's anything else from board members, is just the closed session motion. Anything else?
Do you have that motion?
I do. I need to ask the board to consider a motion to go into closed session, discuss three matters to consider: the qualifications, competence, performance, character, fitness, conditions of appointment, or conditions of initial employment of an individual public officer or employee, or prospective public officer or employees presented in general statute 143, 1811a6. Since there's no other business to come forward to the board at this meeting, following the closed session, the meeting will be adjourned.
Is there a motion?
Motion.
Motion by Commissioner Bessie, and second by Commissioner Plouffe, for the first time today. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
We are adjourned.
Madam Chair, I've got some information for the manager.
Oh, okay. Please go.
They may already know about it. I told you that I would keep you posted all the time that I knew anything about new electric stuff and rolling stock and whatever it might be. Well, you may have seen it, today's the first time I saw this, that Mack truck has come out with electric truck, a medium-duty truck, and that might fit something that you would want to use. So I just wanted to make you aware of it. I don't want to take a chance on you missing something, which you very seldom do, and I don't remember whether they reported to you a while back that -- and I didn't know that either until I was reading about electric stuff. And Cummins Engine, they've been working on something too, so...
Are you talking about an eight-wheeler or...?
Well, the medium-duty, I don't believe, is an 18-wheeler, but they're -- the companies are working toward that, and I think there actually is some. They're working towards it. They're just going to be things that work in special applications.
Yeah. Scott and some of his staff went out and did a demo of -- it's the first time kind of -- there's been a big push commercially with lawn equipment and what have you. They did a demo, I think, yesterday on sort of the -- on the electric equipment that's out there to do lawn work. So we'll see. Be coming.
As I want. I just want to keep you posted.
That's great. Thank you.
Vice Chair Wiz, before we go into close, I just wanted to -- I hope I don't embarrass one of our workers, but one of the workers in this building didn't have a clue of who I was, and he works in generous service. I think his last name is Ims. He says he does building assessment, and he was so helpful. And I, you know, decided, well, I'll have a conversation with him, and just so happy he graduated from Carver High School, so you know now, he's like probably my favorite government employee. But I just wanted to let you know that that is a lost art in a lot of times institutions, that just regular employees making sure that when they see citizens, how can we help you? Are you lost? And just being concerned. So I just, you know, wanted to thank you for your leadership in how our employees, you know, interact with citizens.
Yeah, it's really cultural, but we're -- I'm not surprised, because we have a ton of folks like that. Everybody who shows up gets to see Ms. Bernice down there, and she's going to help you get to the right place, and I think from there, it just, it's infectious at some point in time. And so thank you, but we'll pass that along.
That's great. Further comments? We have not voted on the motion. All in favor of the motion to adjourn and go into closed session, say aye. That's unanimous. We are adjourned.